Board of Supervisors for Monday, May 20, at 7:00. I'll ask that you rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call to establish support.
Supervisor Weidman?
Here.
Supervisor Tice?
Here.
Chairman Zipper?
Here.
Supervisor Wolfle?
Here.
Supervisor Stavinas?
Here.
Next item is the meet and greet. We normally go in the audience to find out who you are. All we want to know is your name and address and where you live. We don't need any speeches at this point. We'll start over here. Linda, you can introduce yourself.
Linda Wait, Clerk Treasurer.
Dick Weidman, 4108 South Countryview Road. Chuck Tice, Supervisor.
Neil Zipper, the Chairman, and I hold up the south half of A-Side Cemetery.
Dan Wolfle, Supervisor.
John Stavinas, Supervisor.
Justin McDonald, PMS crew chief.
Betty Keno, who belongs to somebody here, is the town clerk.
Linda, mom.
Okay, Sandy?
Sandy Brown with the League of Women Voters.
Jean Miller, North Port Sturgeon Bay.
Kathy McCabe, 500 North North Port, Sturgeon Bay.
Patrick Fitzgerald, 6124 North Cave Point Drive, Jacksonport.
And behind the video is Mr. Performer.
I'm Latty Chapman, Glidden Drive.
What did you say, good guy?
Glidden Drive.
Okay, the agenda has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Need a motion then to adopt?
Who do we adopt the agenda as opposed to?
Second.
Okay, I don't see any additions or corrections. We were going to have a presentation, but that's been canceled. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Okay, approved of the minutes of Board of Supervisors meeting April 22.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from April 22.
Motion by John. The second comes from?
Me.
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? Corrections? You're reading on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's carried. Financial report. April 2013. Show us also the budget versus the actual account balances and the transactions to date as of April 30. Any questions or comments on any of that? No?
Most accept the financial report?
Motion is to accept the financial report and the others place it on file. All in favor? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's carried. Approval of the vouchers, bills, and claims, April 23 through May 20. You did have an opportunity to take a look at it, I believe. Do we have any questions or comments? Need a motion to pay those bills?
Move that we approve the vouchers, bills, and claims, April 23 through May 20, 2013.
I'll second that.
Okay, the second is by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's carried. Do we have any oral committee reports? Included in your packet were the written reports of the Cable Advisory Committee. Likewise, the Plan Commission. And Sebastopol Parks and Recreation Board.
Neil, can we just get back to the oral committee report quick? We had a meeting for the comprehensive plan on May 9, and we decided to draw a circle about a mile from the middle of Belmy and a mile from the middle of Institute, and then a mile out from the Sturgeon Bay boundary lines to start with our rezoning to get them zoned SE, which is small estates rather than versus doing a whole subdivision, conservation subdivision. So, we're going to be meeting with the county on the 13th of June. We have, we've invited one of them from the county, and we're going to get, have a public hearing sometime after that, and everybody will be welcome to come and give our input. Everybody that is affected and in that area will have a letter sent to them, but anybody else can come to the meeting.
Okay.
A little bit on tourism zone.
I'm going to do an oral, and I can, go ahead.
Door County Tourism Zone Commission just had their audit review. It's available if anybody wishes to look at it. For the month of January through January last year, tourism was up 7.5% in our county. February was up 4% against February of last year. March is up 15.5% for the year. Our March income will be $1,966. Tourism is taking off real well again. Everybody's stating the fact that their sales or their reservations are increasing, filling up faster than normal, if you can call what was happening normal. So, things are moving along real good. Looks like it's going to be a great summer. We're going to really have some problems down in the Sturgeon Bay area with the bridge out. You can see that already with traffic backing up, so you're just going to have to bear with it and do the best we can.
Okay, were there any other oral committee? Okay, how about the committee minutes? You want to accept them and display some on file?
It's a move.
Okay. It'll be, we'll just place them on file. So, let's include the sheriff's, why are you still a deputy? I thought you were a sergeant or commander by now. Really? Okay, Bob Lauder is here, and he's going to tell us all about what? Seat belts. Where are your seat belts?
Where are your seat belts? Slow down. Only thing I have for you, and I'm not sure if you've heard, we've been going around all the businesses in the county, including Sebastian, which is my area, and updating all of the business directories, so we have current information in case there's a problem anywhere. So, if you know of anybody or if you hear of what they do, they can contact us. I can stop in and talk to them. We just want to have current information in case something happens. Find an open door, we know where to call. Other than that, just sorry for coming in late. We have up our patrol, you know, on double B and B because of the bridge. We're seeing a lot more traffic on those roads than we normally do when people bypassing and coming around.
There must be something wrong with that little speed indicator on Gordon. It says 35, but when I come through there, it's always 40 something.
What time do you normally go through? It's like to be there. Speed indicator to help.
Yeah. Okay, anybody have any concern or problem with anything for?
Make any headway on the vandalism of the mailboxes and road signs?
You know, Sergeant Moore, I've been working on that quite a bit. I haven't heard any updates. I will tell you that, it's been a while since I've been here, but I did get some information that I followed up on with some names that fell through.
Just one in particular, the stop sign on the corner of HH and Walker Road. Somebody, it's a fairly new sign. It belongs to, it's a county sign, but somebody's been using it for target practice.
Again.
I'd like to know where you got the shells. I can't find any.
You can have your gun, but you can't get shells.
We're getting into that time of the year again now with the kids getting out of school and Nelson.
Well, the nice thing about Nelson and WD is they're just pulling it out, so I can just reset it, dig the hole back and reset it every time. So, they're not vandalizing that one. They're just taking it out.
How many times did you do that already?
Two, maybe three.
Well, we constantly have a problem with the paintball. Signs which, although it doesn't appear to be very, a very big issue, but the, whatever they use for the paintball, that paint does not come off. And if we use any kind of a cleaning agent and/or gasoline, then we deface the sign and we no longer have the re-flectivity that we need. And a regular stop sign is about a $38 bill. In addition to it, then you, you get the charges of the truck, the person bringing it over, the screws to put it back on, and so it gets to be a very big issue. We are going out on our road patrol sometime this, I don't know if we can accomplish it yet this month, but we're going to take an inventory of the number of signs that are missing and have been stolen. A lot of our street signs are missing only because we have very nice signs, bark and rip and forest, so they get picked up quite a bit. So, if you see any of those around, bring them back. All right, well, thanks for coming.
I have one question. Do you have any jurisdiction on the road coming out of the high school parking lot here behind the town hall?
Not a lot. I've looked into that already. It's considered a parking lot, so we can enforce reckless driving, drunk driving. Hopefully, we don't have to do that, but on that type of issue, but it is considered, you know, part of the parking lot.
Yeah, I was back there. I filed a complaint with the school district again. I was back there working last week, the week before, and some kid came out of the parking lot, and if there wasn't, if there was some visibility, I would have had a license plate. The kid came out of the parking lot like a jet plane, got about halfway down the gravel road, got the car sideways. I thought for sure he might make me a victim if not himself, and managed to straighten the car out and continued around the corner. But I called the school because they've taken down our fence down there. I think three occasions, they've taken out some of our fence. So, I expressed my concern. I suggested they put a speed bump in there. They're resistant to do anything, but the bottom line is sooner or later, that money, they're going to take out some more of our fence and maybe one of our employees, because when, although the problem's going to decrease here in two weeks, but it's a continual problem. If you have an opportunity to express your concern to them, I think that'd be terrific.
And I'm not sure much around, but we are here a lot.
Right.
At the school. We have the day shift guys are making sure that they're here, you know, in the morning doing the patrol and 3:11 shift, you know, normally unless there's something really big going on, we have a car in the area. And we've been, because the school wants it, we've been forcing our patrol out on the highway area to slow down through there. So, it's hard to believe that, because the kids know we're here, you know, they're doing that stuff, but.
It's all going up that gravel road, and, you know, once they break their traction and things start slipping around, I mean, it's just a free-for-all. So, I called and complained to the school in terms of what was up, because, you know, I could have been a victim of that one, but, you know, something.
Well, here, we're doing our, you know, the next couple of weeks and next year, we'll make sure we, you know, get down, get down there.
Yeah, I think that's all. So, thank you.
I would have had complaints from Cherry Road, that's another area that's, you'd be a fine area. Some people there have called in with speed complaints, and we've been doing a lot of patrolling on Cherry Road and other places, down to 45. And I think people are starting to learn because we're starting to get them to slow down, but that was a pretty bad area also.
Thanks again.
Dick, who's also on the school board, indicates a let-out time at school is 3:12, 3:15. And I think you can sit back there and watch him.
I'll let you park in our garage. I'll sit. You can back in.
Okay, very good.
I don't think the speed bump idea is very good. Your last one didn't fare very good.
This one will feel much better.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for coming, though. Okay, Penny Midas is next. Door County Coastal Byway, the kiosk. Chuck?
Police is all drawn up and ready for signing. We're waiting for the exhibits to it right now, which would be the site map plan and a couple of pictures dictating the measurements and that of the sign itself. So, that portion is taken care of. The roof and logo portion of the kiosk, along with the decorative rope, has been delivered. It's down at the Door County Economic Development Center's storage building. So, that portion's ready. The panels are in their first stages of design and layout right now. We should be seeing some examples of that within the next couple of weeks to start doing our review on it and noting any changes that might need to be made. So, things are starting to move.
Is the script now done or not? The script, the actual?
Everything should be ready. It's just a matter of getting it down in a layout form now so that it fits on the panels and then going through a review process.
So, we still have some input into what appears there or not?
Correct.
All right.
Once we get the sample panels, the draft, we can make our corrections, get it back for final work. We hope to have it by the 4th of July, maybe.
All right, are there any questions of Chuck? Is that that staked-out area there? Before that?
Steve and I walked out on the area, laid a tape, and put some stakes in, but now it has to be laid out by an actual surveyor and marked. It's taking a little longer right now because working with Steve in order to get a better price on our portion of this, he's also including some of his own work into it for his development that's going on, so the project is a little bigger in scope than just laying out where the sign is going to be.
Okay, but everything is in order. All right, the newsletter and the status, apparently it's ready for distribution or it has been or not?
The printer finished the newsletter and delivered it to the Sunshine House for folding and postage, and then it'll be sorted down to the postal routes, and I expect it'll be in everybody's mailbox, hopefully Friday or Saturday. We caught two things, we'll just make mention of them. One, there's an article in there by Tony Hane for the town park. The phone number in there is in error, so if you don't know Tony's number and you want to call the town hall, then we'll help them out. And also talking about the kiosk that Chuck just mentioned, the Sebastopol kiosk. If you look at the kiosk, there's just a mock-up of our kiosk. It's not our kiosk. It's a mock-up of a kiosk. So, if you look real closely, you'll see the words Egg Harbor. We realize it's a mock-up of somebody. It's not ours, so, but it's in there to give you some idea what the design looks like. So, should be in your mailbox this weekend, and any comments, please feel free to call me or Linda and let us know what's up, so.
In my reading of it on the cover, our newest supervisor wrote the article. I found it.
You find it entertaining?
I did.
Okay.
In the third paragraph, he indicates that, and this is his word, not mine, "I have enjoyed and survived being married to my wife, Mary, for 35 years."
She's already, she's already informed me that should have been taken out. It was just a slip. I don't know why I wrote that in there. Sorry.
I thought that was pretty clever. All right.
Opportunities to edit things and to not edit them.
You didn't get a?
It should have said, "She survived," but it's.
Oh, okay, they dropped the "s." Okay, Clark Lake Launch Ramp, the status?
The temporary, the temporary, the old steel ramp was put in a couple of weeks ago, so people are able to use it. The pier is not in, will not go back in until after construction. They patched up the old steel pier, dropped it in. They're scheduled to start work on June 2 to put in the concrete ramp. Expect that to happen that week, and then as soon as possible after that, we'll have the pier in, and that should hopefully resolve all the Clark Lake ramp issues and problems in the future, to be determined, but looks good.
And the reason for the late start is we had to be held up because of the DNR permit. They could not get in there to start the construction earlier because they had to wait for the fish to do the spawning, and apparently when the calendar turns to June, then it's okay.
And they're done. In the perch term of muskies, yeah.
Okay. All right. What is the appeal process to the Board of Adjustment? Is that in error or is that new information coming?
I thought we went over that the last time.
Yeah, we did. I think I picked up.
Oh, I thought Supervisor Wolfle was going to do some checking.
I did, but I brought that up at the last one, Linda, where I had talked to Mariah, and the summary of it was Victoria Cernich, who had, at that, two meetings ago, had explained what she thought the process was. I confirmed that with Mariah, that we do have the process. We can appeal it. We don't pay the fee, but we still have to go through the process with respect to that. We do not have a veto power, so, on those issues.
We're only allowed to make, I mean, does the town board have the right then to make an appeal directly to the RPC?
Yes.
Yes.
Because we are, I don't know how they worded it, but it's kind of like we are vested interest in it.
Okay.
So, we do the regular, regular appeal, just like if you had a variance that wasn't right, you wanted to appeal it, and then it would go through the chain there, and it could end up in court too, so.
I think the only thing that Mariah and I talked about, maybe just to add to that, and I can't remember if I mentioned it last time or not, but they felt, said if we feel strongly about an issue, even if we write a letter and we're specific about it, she said it's to our benefit to show up, to make a physical appearance. So, we have had a couple in the past few years, one in particular that they overrode on us, and I can't say that any of us were there. I don't recall, but we had all voted against it, and they reversed it, and construction was underway, so.
Okay.
I think if we have one of those again, we definitely should decide to take the next step and appeal it, so.
Okay. Is that it, John?
Yes.
Spring Green Turf Maintenance Program, the cost update.
This must be my meeting.
Back up a little bit. Our newest member on the board brought up the broadleaf application. Last time around, we could not really speak to it because we had not agenda'd it properly or it was not on our properly noticed agenda. So, we did table it until this time, and Dan had volunteered to pick up some information on the 24D application that Dick had referred to. Dan supplied us with the information. I see we do have some people in the audience. I'll give you an opportunity to speak, but I think we'll start off here. Dick, do you want to?
Well, the only question I had was kind of the redundancy of applying a broadleaf weed killer, probably 24D, three times a year, generally, in the type of maintenance program we have here, that I would think we would want to maintain, we would probably only need to make one broadleaf weed killer application in the fall and not follow up in the spring and summer again. It, it really serves no purpose to, when the lawns, unless we're irrigating various areas of turf, it really makes no sense to be out there applying fertilizer and weed killer to dormant turf that isn't growing to begin with. And I see, you know, it's like we're looking at, well, close to $2,100 for those two applications. And I really see no reason to spend that kind of money for those two applications.
Okay, let's go to the letter that Dan had supplied us the information on. Dan, if you want to recap that a little bit, be appreciated.
Sorry, I got so many things here in front of me. I lost my own letter. Thank you. What have I got? The focus of the conversation that I chased down was a little different than what Dick talked about. I was focused more on the application of 24D, which by state statute or federal EPA, I guess, can only be applied twice a year on any lawn, but my understanding was our issue was the broadleaf weed control, not so much the fertilizer. So, with that in mind, I went out first to just see what the, what some of our other communities in the door were doing to try and understand the concern. So, when I talked to Green, excuse me, I talked to Park Director Bob Bordeaux and the City of Sturgeon Bay and asked what they had done and what they were doing. I also talked to the person that manages the Parks Department up in Sister Bay to try and understand what they're doing to control broadleaf weeds, and they're both using 24D product. They also fertilize. They apply different pesticides or herbicides depending on the location, like fence lines and walkways and things. I also called the City of Green Bay Parks Department, as they have 100 fields that they treat, to find out what they are doing, and they use 24D as a broadleaf weed control. We discussed the various concerns about using that product. Most of those, all of those people that I contacted felt that if applied properly and according to regulations, in their belief, it was an acceptable alternative for them to, to use in their parks, and they do use them in their parks, and they use either Spring Green or True Green or one of the other commercial fertilizer companies. Some they, some, most of them do not spray, obviously, in where the kids' playground is, if they have that kind of thing, so that's an accepted, an area that's an exception. So, understanding that, I thought our issue here was 24D. I pursued with our vendor an alternative, and they came back and gave me some alternatives that they could use in lieu of 24D, which would still be a broadleaf weed control, and that would be applied one or two times a year, and to change to that would cost us an additional $100 per year on our contract price. And basically, I've told them, subject to this meeting, that we would pursue using that product versus 24D, just in the, in the event that it, you know, becomes a more serious issue over time. They don't necessarily think that it's quite as effective, so they have to, we have to wait till the weeds are in growth stage before this particular product can be applied to help control that. But at this point in time, I've told them, subject again to tonight, that we'd probably go ahead with that and revise our contract. This is kind of, I think, one of those issues that half of us are going to feel one way about the topic, and the other half are going to feel the opposite way, whether, you know, I don't know that we'll ever come to any agreement on what to do, but I think the town is prepared to change, to eliminate the use of 24D, and at the same, same time, keep the. and at the same, same time, uh, keep the park in the same state that it's in today. So, I think that's kind of it.
Do you, do you know what the product is?
Yes, I do, and I thought I brought it with me, Dick, but I believe it's called Encore. And I thought I have it with me, but apparently it's the one sheet that I don't.
And is it, I mean, is it applied as a granule, a spray, or what?
It's applied as a spray.
Three times?
No, all of these, oh, these products can only be applied twice a year.
Twice a season.
Right. So, and there's, by the way, just from a footnote, um, our vendor always calls us and lets Linda know that they're coming to spray, so that they can notify the school, so that, you know, according to the EPA hazmat sheets, or I forget what the other word is for them. Once it's applied and dried, uh, it's in an acceptable form, and can be, the fields can be used. So, they always give us a heads up as well.
The, the point I, you know, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we cannot use 24D. Use of 24D in the fall, after activities are pretty well wrapping up at the park, would limit the amount of exposure of people to 24D. 24D is very effective in the fall. I have well over thirty years' experience in that type of an application plan. Uh, it means that the next year, you do not apply any broadleaf weed killer because there is any need to. Uh, it's very effective. And I think the, really the subject is, number one, is, you know, paying the $2,100 for these applications in, in, in the spring and summer, especially the summer when, you know, most of the lawns are dormant, except for the lawns, you know, the turf area that we're maintaining in the ballparks. I mean, you're irrigating that, right?
Right.
Okay.
It's all relative to the year that we have, though, Dick. I mean, you can have a wet year, and, you know, it's just...
But I, you know, I just do not see any purpose in applying a broadleaf weed killer in the spring and the summer. Uh, if you've done, if you've done a good job of controlling weeds in the fall, there shouldn't be any need to, uh, put out additional herbicides. And as far as fertility goes, I mean, I also have a lot of experience in turf management. And generally, under our type of maintenance, our type of program we have here, uh, a fall and a spring application is all that's necessary. If we are running a golf course or something like that, sure, then we can have, you know, three applications of fertilizer, um, but for our general park, um, two is more than enough. And, um, applying it to this, you know, to the summer, when, uh, nine times out of ten, the turf is dormant, it is simply just, you know, a waste, and material doesn't serve any purpose.
All right, I think we're gonna have opinions all over the place here, and you're gonna start. Denise is gonna answer. I don't wanna get in any kind of a turf war.
A turf war.
John, did you have anything new to add at this point?
If they can only spray twice a year for broadleaf, in the new contract, you've got fertilizer, broadleaf, weed control in the spring, and then early summer, you got fertilizer plus broadleaf control. And then the fall was the same, fertilizer plus broadleaf weed control. I thought you said they could only spray for it twice. They're spraying three times, according to their contract.
Oh, they cannot spray 24D more than twice a year, so they substitute some other form of product.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. So, and I mean, if everybody feels that 24D is this major issue, then we use the alternative and...
Well, I'm, I'm a chemical expert, so I just thought it was funny. They were spraying three times for it. And you said they could only spray twice.
They can only spray twice. They can only use 24D twice.
All right, let's go to Chuck. You have something to offer?
I think the contract is signed, sealed, and they're ready to start the work. It, it's a little late to try to change anything this year, but I do think we should bring this up next year and really look at it. As Dick states, the proper time to kill those weeds is in the fall. The midsummer application is, is truly a waste of money for fertilizer and weed killer. I wouldn't do anything at that point. This will give us an opportunity to see how this new product works. Uh, we intend that 24D goes on in the fall by the looks of this, uh, contract, so I'd say...
Well...
It's done for the year, but we should really look at it next, next year before the contract is signed and get something down that makes more sense.
Okay, I'm gonna go to the, um, group here. We did receive a letter from the League of Women Voters from Shirley, Senator Riggi, and Martha Bellar. And, uh, Sandy Brown had, or someone asked Linda to speak on the issue. I'm not gonna allow all of you to speak, but if you have one person that wants to bring your message.
We sent our letter, so we're separate from these folks. Um, I just wanted to be here to hear the discussion.
Okay. All right, did you need to offer anything other than what was in your letter?
No.
Okay, I had a question with it, only because it came to me earlier, uh, the letter, that is. And it says, "The League supports local policy that reduces or eliminates the exposure to synthetic pesticides, including broadleaf herbicide." I'm wondering who's got that policy where? And then you're inferring that it should be in public places in the town of Sebastopol. We know of no policy that's in place, so whatever you were referring to, I was gonna call Shirley and find out, but... Anyway, the, uh, the League would encourage the use of management programs such as integrated pest management, as recommended by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, including the use of non-toxic control techniques for maintenance of lawns and athletic field. I believe what we have here is, uh, in summary, we've been doing it in the past, believing that the people we hired to do the job knew what they were doing. And it wasn't until Dick came on board that suddenly it became a problem, or it brought it to our attention. So, as you can see, Supervisor Wolfel made contact with the people, and he's also checked around with others to see, including Green Bay's Sister Bay and Sturgeon Bay. So, if they have some kind of a policy in place, it might be advantageous for us to become familiar with it. Whether or not we can modify, do you believe we can modify the contract with this year?
Um, well, we've, tentative we modified it in the sense that we would not apply the 24D product, that we'd use a substitute.
No.
So, beyond that, um, I don't know.
So, may I say something?
Phil, are you done, Dan?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead, Dick.
Okay. You know, I think just, if we just look at this thing from a monetary standpoint, a thousand dollars for an application this summer is, is a total waste of money. And I'm saying that, I guess nobody believes me, but, um, I've got, you know, thirty years of experience in working with turf management, and I don't know anybody else on this board that has the kinda experience I have. But yet, you know, I mean, it's not even recognized. I'm sorry, but, you know. That's a thousand dollars that, that is not necessary.
Do you know, uh, who your contact person is down there, Dan?
That's Spring Green, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. Corky is his name. I can't come up with his last name.
Any chance you can hook up a conference call or something with, uh, you and make sure that Dick is along with you?
Sure.
See what kind of a modification or... At least bring your information.
And also, when we get these bids, I mean, nothing is specified on there. How much, or what the formulation of the fertilizer they're applying, how much they're applying. And we have no idea, you know, what we're getting for, for the, uh, the charge that's, that's being, uh, put on the invoice.
I appreciate your concern, and I do, uh, go along with both of it being monetary and as well.
They do give us, Dick, a complete breakout of everything that they put on the lawn. How much nitrogen, how much phosphorus, what they put on the...
That should probably be on their bid, their, their price quote there, so we know exactly what they're...
Would you be willing to do a conference call at one point?
Yeah, I'd, I'd sit in and listen to, uh...
No, you can sit in and talk.
Corky parents.
Okay, can we leave it like that? Can you see if you can raise something?
I'll talk to him and see what's up.
Can you do it in the next week? When were the...
They've been waiting for me.
Okay.
So...
Well, find out what you can do. We haven't paid the bill yet, so we're nothing out. Okay? Did that meet your fancy, or did you wanna add something to? Okay. I'm getting a lot of, yeah, yeah, okay.
I have a question. Um, what is the ultimate goal, aim of, of what you're doing with the fields? Why are you paying those dollars? For what purpose?
Well, to control the, uh, the weed, and prior to our using it, there was one, nothing to be proud of.
We've been doing it over a period of time, not with the same company, yeah.
Right, we've had three different vendors. I mean, if you have taken a ride past any of the, for example, St. Peter and Paul parking, or a baseball field down there, and I have some nice pictures, I'd be happy to share with you.
I've driven by, I've seen it.
It looks like...
You can have a nice-looking field, just like you have out there now with all the chemicals, without using any chemicals at all. That's the, the goal of safe lawns in Door County. You can have natural fields, and it's unfortunate you couldn't be at the presentations a couple of weeks ago. I appreciated to see the membership from your board there. But I think it would have been helpful to, to not only hear about other methods and go and, I mean, go about it. The cost savings, the dollars you're paying now, don't stay local. Those go out of Door County for chemicals produced in some other state, toxic chemicals. If you're substituting for 24D, you're substituting another toxic chemical. We're talking about water quality. We're talking about healthy soil. And we're talking about the health of the community. And you, of all areas in Sebastopol with Dunes Lake, the eutrophication that's happening there, the recommendation is for no lawn pesticides or synthetic fertilizers to be used in this whole area, because that wetland is so valuable. Now, I know that, um, all of you care a lot about this community, or you wouldn't put in the time that you do and, and, and serve this community the way you do. I would like you to really take a serious look at what you can do. You can have a beautiful lawn out there, very naturally. You can use the same dollars that you're using to, to give to Spring Green and create a lawn maintenance program here in Door County.
Does our clerk have your name?
She does.
Okay. And I'm sure Dick and Dan can make contact with him and... Yeah, I, I appreciate your opinion.
All right, very good.
Could I add one more thing to Chairman Zipper?
I don't know. Nine, five minutes is long expired. I gotta answer it.
Um, I grew up in St. Paul, and I watched my father play on the fields at Dunning Field. They were never chemically treated back in the forties, the fifties. My father played, um, softball five nights a week. He was inducted in the Minnesota Softball Players Hall of Fame. I watched Dave Winfield, Jack Morris, and Paul Molitor all play baseball in St. Paul on Dunning Field. Fields that were not treated, yes, there are a few down the lines here, not like overheads, you know, down on the corner. But those were natural fields. Those were before the pesticides were used. These players made it to the major leagues. We wanna have quality fields for, for youth to play on. I, I don't have any question about that, and that you wanna provide the best you can. I'm saying there is a way to do it. Thank you.
Did you say earlier that you were from Jacksonport?
Yes.
What did they do up there?
Uh, they spray half the field. They, they treat the field. They don't do it in any of the other parks. Lake Shore Park and any other areas.
The only place we do is here.
Okay, I think we've, uh, talked about that enough, so... All right, we'll leave it with, uh, Dan and Nick to get together, and if we have your name, we'll, uh, be in contact with you as well. All right, thanks for showing up. New business, uh, first responder, group agreement, automatic and mutual aid agreement. Uh, we have been given information from our Corporation Council for the county. First writing was in October, and then it was corrected in, it was not October, it was April. And the second writing, uh, came in about a month later, in May 9. What had happened here is the, uh, one of the paramedics on his, in a response call, is an EMT for a township. Uh, took a tumble and severely injured a shoulder and the muscles and everything else involved, and had to be off of work for a while, which triggered a hue and cry from the EMTs and par, and EMRs for the various towns as to what kind of insurance would we have in the event that we are injured. Now, because the paramedic was on county, county time and had sick leave that he could, uh, bank on to keep his pay coming, that portion of it, he was able to pay his bill. Who's gonna pay for his insurance or his medical is, I don't know. I think if, if Jacksonport doesn't cover it, or if their insurance carrier doesn't, it'll probably be a lawsuit to the county. I'm not familiar with it, so I can't say. The biggest problem that it, that we do have, I'm on the Insurance Committee for the County Board, and it's our first go-around as far as coming into this kind of a problem. The problem being that there are only two counties out of seventy-two that provide an ambulance service, EMS. And that is the County of Waschere and the County of Door. I happened to be the chairman of the County Board back in the seventies when we initiated the, uh, ambulance service. And I've been, uh, familiar with it, and I've kept up to date with it. And, uh, I can't say anything bad about it, because it's really a, a good venture for all of us. However, we knew that we did have some problem a while ago. Not injury-wise, not workers' comp-wise, but liability-wise was the instigator of it all. And then with, uh, the paramedic being disabled for a while, it grew, and suddenly all the first responding groups from, you from Sister Bay, Egg Harbor, or whatever, they all said, "Well, what kinda coverage do we have if we do go out and injure ourselves?" And it was a very good question. So, because we have our insurance committee on the County Board now, and been looking into our other insurance coverages, and luckily, lucky for me, I was appointed the chairman of the group. We have had two or three different, uh, sessions so far with our insurance carrier using our insurance advisors on what we can and cannot do. We are prohibited by law, on a county-wide basis, to be the all-inclusive and will cover everybody for anything. Uh, we need to take care of what we have in-house and see what we can do. On the thirtieth of this month, we are having, and, uh, we are having our insurance consultant, a couple of, uh, people that deal with it all the time are considered to be experts when it comes to a court of law. And they will be in Door County on the thirtieth at one o'clock. And we're gonna hash this over, uh, because in our efforts to clarify and give some resolve... because in our efforts to clarify and give some resolve to the problem in direction to the EMTs, EMRs, we're finding that the little bit of insurance that we do have or could afford doesn't pay a whole... Won't buy too many groceries, anyway. The problem that we are having is we're not getting the same information from all the sources. So we're going to try to get all the sources together, including one of the local insurance companies who happens to, what, insure maybe about seven out of the 14 or so, or more. Our biggest problem is we're getting different answers from different people. So we get them all in the same room, hopefully we can come up with some kind of resolve. Or else it'll be a good learning session for all of us. The intention is to invite all the town... The towns' officers, a lot of them do work, so they will not be able to attend. But I do know a lot of the administrators and clerks, et cetera, will be coming to the meeting, and it's open to anyone, so if you do want to show up, you're more than welcome. We're going to be in the government center on the first floor. We're going to use the county board room and the antechamber. Hopefully, we'll have enough chairs, hopefully we fill all those chairs. It's before us tonight to see whether or not we wanted to get into any kind of an agreement working with the county of Door. And I think it's best that we just put it aside for now.
Well, yes and no. The first part of the thing with the county of Door, with the insurance agreement, we can put that aside because, I don't know, let's see what they're going to do because I don't feel like we should sign that in agreement because they don't... If you read through the thing, it looks like they want to know everything about us, but they don't want anything to do with us, except to help them. But the other part, the first responder automatic mutual aid agreement, would be a good thing to sign, and that would cover any first responder, like if I was up north and I went on a northern dark call, it would cover me up there. If somebody's coming through our area and a pager goes off and they come to help us, it would cover them in. So if you take the two and separate them, the Door County EMR first responder automatic mutual aid agreement, I would suggest that we sign. The other one, I think we should wait on.
Well, I...
What do we have in place right now? Anything?
Nothing.
Nothing.
No mutual...
We were on the assumption that it had been in place and under the... How many years have you, have we had EMS?
A lot. I think I've been at it over 15 months.
So for that period of time, we were under the assumption that we either had a cover letter or some kind of authorization through the EMS director and insurance that gave us some protection for our people, and we're finding out that it didn't hold water, so...
When it first started, we... Nobody can find the records of it, but we did get paid $5 a year. And we didn't spend it all in one spot. But that, in turn, was, from my understanding, that that, in turn, was our coverage in case somebody got hurt with the workman's comp or something on that order. So... But then, I would say, maybe about eight to 10 years ago, we stopped getting our $5 a year.
Yeah, that was... I found my letter on it.
Okay.
That was one way to try to get around it, by telling the insurance company they were employees.
Right.
And the $5 was just like a... So it didn't hold anything either. So my advice tonight would be is that we just take no action. Wait until the 30th comes up, find out what we have, and if we can provide...
Yeah, but take no action on the first part, but if we separate the two, because the mutual...
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just think we'll hold it off, and we'll probably come out of that with just one.
Well, it's two separate entities, kind of. It's this is... The first part is going with the county, the first four pages. And the second four pages are with each town in agreements.
But I think what we want to do is make sure that we have them on file. We, the county, and we, the towns, all have it on file, so that we don't run into the problem again.
Well, I mean, is this being promoted by the first responder group? I mean, the mutual...
The problem with it is that we'll have as many first responding units like Sebastopol or Ag Harbor, Jacksonport, or whatever. That's how many different attempts there will be to come up with some kind of a modification to the...
I think the document you have in front of you is the final draft
that has been accepted by the village of Sister Bay, the town of Regrow, and the town of Gibraltar. It has been signed by Chris Eck for Sister Bay, the town of Regrow, and Brian Merkel for the town of Gibraltar. So this would be the final mutual aid standalone document.
I do know that the southern part is going to be a problem.
Yeah, I agree. This had gone... Randy Nesbit has seen it, and John Cook had forwarded it to him. So he had made... Randy had made his legal modifications to it already, so...
So when you go over the bridge, you don't respond?
Well, I mean, we have a good working system now between all the different entities with the first responders, paramedics, and everything. And I'm just afraid that if something doesn't get settled to some people's liking, we're going to be short on first responders.
I agree. That's what we're trying to do, is trying to avoid a mass exodus. Keep everybody in. I don't know if we keep everybody happy. But whether we come to some resolve providing the insurance by the county is apparently out of the question. We can't do it by statute. However, that doesn't say that we can't give a credit to the various municipalities who do have it to augment or supplement the first responder group. And this is all being tossed around, so I can't... Maybe I'm letting some out of the bag here, but as long as I'm the chairman, I can speak. Anyway, that's where we're heading. We're trying to make it more palatable, and...
Well, can we, you know, just listening to all this stuff, but can we, as a town, decide to go to rural insurance and increase the worker comp level for these people? And I guess the question I have is, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but the question is, how do they base this? Because workers' comp is always based off of income. So now you have no income, what do they do? Is there a fix for that, Linda, at all?
Um, yes. Dell from Rural Insurance did give us a response.
Oh, he did? Okay. Maybe I missed it.
But isn't it all... I mean, it's also medical expenses that are incurred from your injury, which probably are going to outweigh any kind of income consideration.
Yeah, but medical is easy to do because it's medical. Versus workers' comp is based off of how much you earn. So medical pays medical.
Our biggest problem on the workers' comp is not the one-time interest. It's the forever. Someone who's physically disabled for life, and we're going to be paying forever. That's what dictates what our premium costs are going to be.
And I'm talking about disability payments.
Well, that's workers' comp.
Right, I mean, but long-term.
See, how they would work that, but my question was, is how would they compare us as first responders or EMTs? So they would go wherever and take a full-time EMT, and they would take his wages and base it off of that. Say, if they had full-time EMTs in another county? Was my understanding how they would...
Well, this is what happened in Bailey's Harbor, because they didn't have any full-time anybody here. They had to go down to Green Bay, and they pulled from Green Bay Park.
Right.
So apparently, that dollar amount, I don't know, maybe I shouldn't say, but apparently is inappreciable as some money.
I would think a Green Bay EMT for a time would get some...
So these are all items?
But I guess my question was, is, you know, we have different people, different levels of basically grades on first responders. I'm an EMR, which is the lowest. How are they... There, I don't think there's any full-time EMRs, so there's full-time EMTs, there's full-time paramedics. You know, how are they... I guess my question was to the insurance guy, how are they going to average out? Because, you know...
They're going to promote you.
The $20 or so that I make for a meeting going to an EMR, an EMT or EMR meeting is a little bit less than what I make in my full-time job, so...
A little bit.
The rates that were provided by Rural Insurance, he responded to our question, you know, what would workers' compensation cost for our first responders? So he goes to the Department of Workforce Development or whatever, or Workers' Compensation Department, and he found first responder. And the current rate for first responders, $9.59 per hundred of payroll. So our total payroll budgeted for first responders this year, $6,650, I believe. But the minimum is $1,560 per individual. So you'd have to use that minimum. So each of our first responders will be based on a salary of $1,560 per year, and then our premium would be based on that. He did provide us with a number. Roughly $2,400 a year. That would be for 15 responders, 16 responders.
Based on that income level.
Based on that income level. Because we have to use that minimum.
Right.
Wouldn't it be more prudent with the six communities involved here that they all sit down together and work out in... So that all the insurance policies are the same between the groups? And if Sebastopol comes in with one with one rate, and Sister Bay's got one with a different rate, you're just going to have confusion and problem between the groups themselves at that point.
But they're all going to be different insurers, for the most part, the ones that are with Rural.
See, I guess the problem...
But you could still get the policies, the basic policy, the same even if it is a different company. I understand that Sister Bay has got a fire department. They can incorporate their EMTs through the fire department insurance program. Bailey's Harbor, the same. We don't have that opportunity. And what would our chances of maybe signing on with Bailey's Harbor or Sister Bay's group? And, you know, getting connected in that way with the insurance policy at least? Or even the Sturgeon Bay Fire Department, which is exactly what Sister Bay and we, paramedics?
Sturgeon Bay has EMTs, EMRs, yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of things to look at, and...
Right. And see, the problem comes in is you're paged by the sheriff's department. And then when you're on a call, you're working for the EMS department, and we're Sebastopol first responders, so it's like, you know, where does... It's kind of a roundabout thing. So... I don't know where the answer is.
Did you all get the memo from Kelly Herbal? I see it went to Chuck, did anybody else get it?
It was addressed to Chairman Zipper and Supervisor Tice, that's why. But it's pretty much what I just stated a minute ago about the premium cost.
Well, it's confusing at best because he's talking about the current rate at $9.59 per $100 of payroll. And if you have 16 paramedic, or not paramedic, EMTs, times the $1,560, you come with $24,960. And you back that off, you get a premium of $239 and change.
$393.
But it says nothing about the limits of coverage, so... That would be my suggestion. Don't get excited, we've been nominee months, not knowing where we've been. So it does look like we're going to get an answer by the end of this month. We can bring that back, I don't think it's going to change anything. You're saying you already have four signed, but just as easy, you've got...
And I know it's Hugh Shaw, Lake Harbor, going to sign it this weekend. I know it's on the council agenda for Sturgeon Bay tomorrow night, we're going to sign on to it.
Okay. So my suggestion is we just table it or move it forward until we do have an answer and bring it back at that time.
Both parts? Both parts? I wanted to separate them, but you don't want to separate them, I think.
Well, you can separate them, but I don't think we're going to vote on both tonight.
No. But the first part with the county...
Yeah. Well, I don't think any of us are going to go ahead and sign it without talking to your group.
No, well, that part, correct. But the other part with the mutual agreement between the towns?
Yeah.
You don't want to sign that either?
No.
Okay.
Well, I mean, is signing this going to push this forward? I mean...
They're almost like two separate things.
Well, yeah, they are two separate...
They are. The mutual aid agreement that mirrors the common fire department's mutual aid agreement, which we all have, that you guys never saw, and Sturgeon Bay will sign that for you. It mirrors the same thing.
Exactly. You're talking about Fort Norton, I was going to say, we don't have that.
Yeah, but we all have that same agreement. Chris Eck, this document mirrors the countywide fire department mutual aid agreement that goes to, actually, a Door and Kiwanee County agreement for fire service. And then, you know, basically, if there's a large disaster, you know, if we don't have... There is no mutual aid agreement, there never has been. This will help it out, you know? I mean, not saying that we would never go if there wasn't, you know, this 50-car pileup on Saturday in Jacksonport, you know, I mean...
For a cake fest?
Yeah.
Never had it.
I know, I'll never have Jacksonport put it out.
Or L.B. tanks blown up or something.
Yeah, yeah, it just kind of covers us as a realm.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this whole thing, but does this increase our liability? I mean, once we sign on to mutual aid? I mean, does this then mean that our group of EMTs are then are responsible for...
Only if we have insurance. They got the insurance, it doesn't increase our liability.
If somebody from Bailey's Harbors comes through, gets hurt on a work call, it falls back in Bailey's Harbor. They have to go back to their home department to file their workman's comp and everything else. You know, just like, you know, John's up north working up, working, and he goes on a call and gets hurt, he reports it back here.
Don't do that, Joe.
Yes. I know.
Okay, what I'm suggesting is, too many ifs in the whole thing, and if we get something that everybody can agree on...
Are we presently insured under the county, or we have no insurance?
We have no insurance with the county.
Then what kind of liability does this put the town in? If we're uninsured and the first responders continue doing their business?
Well, we have our own insurance on liability, but what kind of medical do we...
Right.
Five and 10,000?
We have liability...
They're not going to cover very much, but...
No, it doesn't. We have liability, we have comprehensive liability, we have under our umbrella. As far as medical payments, yes, it's only $5,000 per incident. We do have the option of raising that to 10,000 for a nominal amount, so we might want to look at that. But right now, it's 5,000 per institute, incident, with a maximum of, I think, 1 million or something.
The major problem right now, then, is the workers' compensation part of the insurance.
Yeah, that's right. Always has been. Okay, unless somebody else has agrees with John that we should separate it and sign them right now, my opinion is that we just wait on it. Next meeting is June 17, so we're less than a month away. We should have some kind of answers by then. Okay?
Okay.
How come these short meetings all always take so much time? Door County Highway Department, the information item so far, there's no removal on private property... properties. We are one of the few that do plow the churches, and we pick up the bill, and that's why we do have it. And the others that you saw there are on call, they have to clear it either with me or with Linda, to either have their yard salted, or sanded, or plowed, if they can do it. It's not on a regular basis, on a one-time call. And if they need it a second time, they have to call again. Okay, the next item is the WTA, Wisconsin Towns Association, recommended ordinances, I think we looked at it before. First thing I wanna tell you is that Tom Harnish is not black. Although, he does appear like he is.
He looks kinda scary, too.
We talked about this before, Chuck wanted to bring it forward, thinking that we should take a look at our various ordinances, and I think we will. I indicated previously, we have some ordinances that are non-enforceable anyway, so why carry them on the books? So I started it, you can finish it, Chuck.
Well, my main concern or reason for bringing it up was the ordinances we have, that we never seem to be able to get the final enforcement on them. It would either rewrite some of these ordinances and put some real teeth in them, start doing something with them. And then, talking with Mr. Harnish and that, some of the other ones that the Wisconsin Towns recommends that each town have, in his list here, we do have majority of them, and some of them, at this point, may not look like they pertain to us, but when we start talking about the livestock ordinance, the, these mega farms, it's something we might wanna look into. Whether they can happen in the town of Sebastopol or not, we could do some real research on it before we create an ordinance, but it's some of the things that could possibly come up in the future here that we shouldn't stay on topic.
Agreed. And that's why we're setting up the ordinance and Code Enforcement Committee, and we'll take a hard look at this. Okay, and onward and upward. The next would be the resolutions, pass them up at your table tonight. And not a whole lot of changes. I had contacted a number of people who I thought had indicated a willingness to serve in the past, and never fails, we always get back to the same old people. One gentleman that did come forward was Dennis Markward, and he would offer to be on the Parks Committee. So if I had room there, I put him on. I tried to balance it out, but you never get that accomplished anyway. Trying to get it down to a lesser number is even harder. And you have any questions on it? I know I just dumped it on you this afternoon, but.
Mr. Chairman, I received an email from Dennis Markward. He, he cannot accept your offer at this time.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's cross Dennis Markward off.
As far as being on the Cable Channel Committee, not being able to receive cable.
Oh, you're supposed to come over here at the town hall and watch?
We have two TVs for you.
Yeah. I would like to be taken off of that committee. I really have no connection with it, and, yeah, I don't think I could add anything to that.
All right, who else?
We've gotta give you something to do.
Who has, who has cable in? You have cable, Chuck?
I won't when I move. The good news, Dick, is you can watch the station on YouTube, so you don't have to come in here, so you can get it there.
Took eight years to get cable to where I am now, and I'm leaving. That makes sense.
But I would like to, I would like to be on the Parks and Rec Committee, just to keep track of things. Yeah, I don't know what I would have to offer for the Cable Committee. No experience whatsoever.
John, do you have cable?
No.
Oh. Do you wanna have cable?
No.
Maddie'll bring it to your house. All right, why don't we just lay this one over until next month, and we'll see. Anybody has any ideas for somebody wanting to be on? Can't believe that they argue because they never get involved, you put them on something that they don't wanna be there, so. Okay, resolution number two is gonna be fast-forwarded to next month. Okay, the correspondence was, the next item. I'll go through it quickly. Independent inspections showed their activity for doing the inspections and permits that were issued. City of Sturgeon Bay Fire Department, you should probably get one of these, so you know how close you can put your tent to a business.
That was interesting reading.
Yeah.
There's no idea that one.
You have this?
I have somewhere, email pulled up.
Anyway, if you're gonna have a party outside, you can't have that tent too close here. Okay, the Department of Natural Resources, payment check and aid in lieu of taxes, that's for the state properties in our town. Recognition, Linda White by Sebastopol FFA. For all of her activities, and especially for going through the, is it the dairy breakfast that you never miss, Linda?
I never miss the dairy breakfast. They were especially appreciative of using the town hall for their recent blood drive. The school normally hosts it, and something came up, so our place was available, and so they were really appreciative of that. We also got recognition from the Sebastopol Girl Scout Group.
Yes.
They hold their meetings in here, too, so.
And they meet here regularly, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Great, very good. Okay, and then, did we all get the notice as far as? Yeah, we did. The Resource Funding Committee hearings for June number six. I did have a correspondence, I don't know if I'm being toyed with or not, but-
Toyed with.
I have a question about getting horse crossing signs put up at Institute. We have horses that cross the highway from Dunn Road to County Trump Pete.
I think there was a lady in here, wasn't that a Broward that was in here asking for something about?
This is signage right in Institute, you know, horse crossing.
This one came from, who just got from, maybe?
Came from Kay at the Institute Salon.
Okay, and the last item that I have, I gave you the little sheet here tonight as far as what we need to take a look at and why we should have a road tour. The Whistler Road Rating needs to be accomplished this year, and Linda normally is the one that monitors all that, so if we could take our tour during the week rather than on Saturday, Linda would be able to come along and keep us in the right direction and also find out what the road ratings should be. And we do have a number of potholes that are appearing and reappearing, and we need to identify those and get them done. And with the addition of a winery building at Grand Mottabees, and our own kiosk to be located there, I think it's time again for us to contact the DOT, so to see if we can get some of the improvements on forty-two fifty-seven at Forest Road. We were talking about acceleration, deceleration lanes, passing lanes on the southbound side. We at one time were gonna straighten out Forest Road to bring it in at a T rather than at an angle, and the DOT would not allow us to do it, so. I found my last letter, which was just in two thousand and eight, so maybe it's a good time to ask for a review again. I did talk to Steve, and he would welcome any kind of improvements there. Then we did have the two road complaints on the Seale and Chips from last year, Moore, and also on Shoreside Circle. They were complaining about the overrun and so the Chips. And if you wanna go in the parking lot of the town, town park, you can see the-
Is that what that is?
Yeah.
Every day, there was another load drawing, I'm just thinking, what is this?
Yeah, the last four came from Moore.
Chairman, who does follow up when, this was a county, this was a county job?
Yeah.
And who does follow up?
Dick, Dick Whiteman will do the follow-up.
Well, I mean-
And take pictures as the cable chairman.
I'm sorry, but, you know, I live about a half mile from Moore Road, and if the intent was to turn Blacktop Road into a gravel road-
Yeah.
-then they did a good job. But it was just, and it wasn't chipstones either, it was pea gravel, it was everything you could possibly think of. I don't know who walked away from a job like that, but whoever did, I mean, there has to be some kind of responsibility. I mean, if we're paying how much, you know, for this job, and it's, is done like that, you know, without any follow-up by anybody.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll address those issues.
Did they not put enough tar down that maybe they were soaked in?
They, they put two inches of gravel on it. I mean, inch and a half to, it was ridiculous. I mean, and the same thing happened at Shoreside Circle. I mean, I ride my bicycle through there, my God, I mean, they turned it into a gravel road. So, I mean, you know, they can do it on County Trump Pete, I mean, but anyhow, I mean, I think there has to be some kind of follow-up. When those jobs are done, somebody has to go and inspect them.
Okay, the other item, then, is the center lining and the edge striping, that's what they call them, the fog lines, I guess, on the hills and curves. In the past, while we've taken care of this old highway road, Peterson Road, West Dunn, and Bluff Court. So as we go out and about, we'll be able to find any more that we do have. Crack filling seems to, I know Forest Road through the wetlands is almost a must because it's really widening. Either we do that, or else we give it some other kind of application. But we'll take a look at South Lake Road and also West Shore. We'll do a street sign inventory to either straighten or replace the faded or missing signs. And the regulatory sign replacement would be like Stop Ahead and Arrow Left, Right, and the stop signs that we need to replace. We've been doing a pretty decent job on them, but they're not cheap yet. Got a call at four o'clock tonight that the road was breaking up on Maple Heights at about forty-six ninety-eight, and also the entrance off of State Trunk Highway forty-two, there apparently are two indentations that are sinking away and getting worse each year.
Leo, if we went around and found out that we had thirty signs that were gone, could we not put a claim against our insurance as vandalism? I mean, I know what's happening now, is you replace one here and one there, and we pay the county, but I mean, if we're constantly doing that, why wouldn't, you know, we know they're being damaged by paintballs or being stolen.
Well, what we've, what we've done now with our seasonal guys, I give them a list of regulatory signs, Stop Ahead, Stop, Arrows Left and Right, whatever, and they put those up, so we are avoiding the, the per-hour charge of the county. But the signs still cost, and they aren't, I mean, they look small, but they're not. I mean, they're pretty big. John can tell you, stop signs are pretty big.
They're a hell of a post-up.
Yeah.
Yeah. As I said before, though, a whole bunch of them are paintball and dirty paste, so I don't know how you can get that stuff off unless we can find out what the paint is composition-wise, and try to get it off.
I wonder if a pressure washer would take it off?
Gas takes it off, but then it takes the reflectivity out of it, too.
But just pressure washer might not affect the reflectivity and yet clean off.
I've had a request that we look at the alignment of Bay Shore Heights Drive. It seems to-
Should we go east-west instead of north-south?
When it comes up around the curve, it seems to be well off of its alignment.
Left-hand, is that the one, it's the left-handers who go up the hill?
Yeah.
When you get to the top of the hill.
Yeah. It's a great gold cart, soapbox derby hill, we should leave that alone.
The only way we're gonna do that is by survey.
Okay, I'm going back. Off Cambray, man. I see I missed one, it's the right-of-way encroachment. We have a stone fence that's onto our town property.
Oh, that guy.
And immediately adjacent to the roadway, yeah, going over the shoulder area, we're gonna have to either talk to the individual and see if he can reconstruct it somewhere else, or have it removed. So anything else you want to add to the list?
What about ditches and culverts? Who's responsibility, like, let's say a ditch fills in from sediment moving, and it affects the drainage, and threatens the flooding maybe of the yard, are we responsible for cleaning out that ditch?
I don't know.
Do we have, I mean, does, does a homeowner have the ability to take independent action on culverts and ditches? Or is that because it's within the right-of-way, does that become a town issue?
Well, we regulate what the size will be. And at one, yeah, and at one time, back in the eighties and nineties, early, the town had a policy where they, they replaced, or if you were adding a new driveway, they would buy the culvert and have it installed. Now, we don't do that anymore.
Anymore.
And we have opened up a couple of culverts that were plugged on what's said over the Bluff Drive.
Drive.
Because we had a water problem that didn't go down, and we had the fire department come out with their pressure hose, and they opened the baby up, but the chief had a nice white shirt on, it wasn't white at the time, we're done, but.
So this particular person is requesting either a culvert opened up or a culvert changed because of, well, the spring, a lot of sediment had plugged it up, and it's also, has plugged up also the drainage flow past the two houses, which means it backs up into the, into one of the homes now. So, and he asked me about it, and I said, well, I don't know who's, if, you know, the So, and he asked me about it and I said, well, I don't know who's, if, you know, the town is responsible for getting that ditch cleaned out so that the drainage can be reestablished past the residence?
I don't know what responsibility we have, but I could find out.
Okay.
Normally the we get into something like that, it's picking up that culvert because the culvert bottom is gone.
Yeah.
Is rusted away, so. It's a matter of spending the dollars or not, so. Anyway, I'll take a look, where, where was it, Dick?
On Forest Road.
Forest?
Yeah. I can give you the two names of the residences. You can contact them.
All right, very good. Okay, so anyone has something else that they wish to bring forward, I can tell you on the county, county basis, it looks like we're going to get the overlay on County Key from Nelson Lane to Glidden this year.
Oh, we are?
Yeah. And the County B project is is going to be going, I don't know why we needed to do that, but I'm in the majority, minority on that one. Okay, give me in the month of May, we don't have many days left here. Today is number twenty, Thursday or Friday seems to be a pretty good day except for thirty. Unless you want to slip it off into the first part, part of June.
I won't be in the country.
I don't need to be here, but I would like to be here just because of appointments and things like that.
Twenty-seven, yeah, come to Jacksonburg. Can we shoot for June sixth or seventh or?
Mr. Chairman? The other, the other, the alcohol beverage matter? Could that be heard at the same time?
We can do it at the same time, but when do we have to have that accomplished?
They're very anxious to get on board with that.
Well, why didn't they do something about it today, we could have done it today?
It has to be on file at least fifteen days, so the application is on file today, but remember state statutes.
Okay.
It has to be on file at least fifteen days before we grant the license, so the earliest they can be granted a license is June fourth.
Who's this?
Cherry Hills Property.
People are going to run Cherry Hills.
Yeah, Tim.
Mike, Mike somebody.
Tim Moore, he's going to run the
He's going to run the tavern.
They filed their application today, they'd like to get it going as soon as possible.
Would be the day?
Fifteen days from today would be June fourth. So if, if the board would approve that license, we can issue it effective June fourth.
Okay.
So when do we do that, Linda? You saying tonight?
Need a special meeting? No.
No, we can't do it.
It wasn't agenda.
Agenda.
Oh, I didn't think, that's why I was trying to figure out where you are, most special meetings.
Can you do it on our OD?
Well, the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, I'll be in Iowa.
June fourth. Where are you going to be on June three?
Canada.
Four?
Canada.
All we need is a quorum.
Well, I'll go, yeah, okay.
I mean, I can do the sixth or seventh, but he can't, so, I mean, that's six of one, half dozen the other.
Third or fourth, I'm available.
Can do the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of this week if you wanted to.
Yes, tomorrow.
Thursday or Friday.
Friday if you wanted to do Friday, if that worked, I don't know.
You can't, you can't do the license though. You gotta do it after the fourth.
No, all you have to do is just approve the license, approve the license application to be effective June fourth. You can hear it anytime.
Does anybody want to do it on twenty-four, Friday?
I'm busy on the twenty-fourth in the morning.
Okay, twenty-three?
Twenty-three, looks like it would work.
I have a meeting every other day at twenty-three would work.
I could do twenty-three if I had to, assuming that I don't start at noon.
I guess.
Well, you give you an opportunity to ride around and put your nose in the air and
But I don't have a blue cup.
Okay.
So is it twenty-three, is it yes or no? Who can't do the twenty-third?
Twenty-third in the morning would be fine with me, but I have a commitment in the afternoon at one o'clock.
Yeah, I should be able to do it the twenty-third in the morning, AM.
Justin, you want to go on road patrol with Leo?
There you go.
Okay, so we try for May twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just, we'll get together for the approval of the, of the license.
At what time?
Yeah, I don't know, ten o'clock?
Six.
Nine o'clock?
Wait a minute, we're not doing the roads on the twenty-third?
No, we can't get anybody go.
Well, who can't go?
Can you make twenty-three?
I guess I'll have to, yeah.
You don't want to.
But you could.
We'll just start at six and we'll be done by eleven.
All right.
Nine o'clock to twenty-third.
You what?
Nine o'clock to twenty-third?
Can you do road inspection on the twenty-third?
Yes.
Eight o'clock, get your butts out of bed.
Oh, six-thirty?
Are you doing road inspection or not?
Six-thirty?
Road inspection at six-thirty?
I won't be there. Eight o'clock's fine. So we're going to do it at eight o'clock on the twenty-third, road inspection and then do the license.
Okay, May twenty-three, eight o'clock.
Okay, are we hearing the license application at eight AM?
Sure.
Sure.
Yes. Sure.
Immediately followed by the road tour?
Sure. You have enough time to get that agenda prepared enough?
Um, sure. Tomorrow, that would be, that's forty-eight hours.
Okay, May twenty-three, eight o'clock. Glad to see that you're all civic minded to get your stuff done.
The van, gas, and oil change and everything, ready to go?
They'll be ready to go. Put your nose in the air and go down the road. Say what?
And pull a trailer.
Okay, so we're on that one for the road and the assessment open book is May thirty-one. Sebastopol graduation is on number two, Sunday. Park and Rec, is that for real, on Wednesday, June five?
Uh, right now
I thought Tony was going to be gone for a couple, three weeks.
He asked me to put it on the calendar for that date, we'll see.
Okay, Coastal Byway Council due the sixth and a community yard sale. June the eighth, oh, the macro. How you doing there, you all filled up?
Uh, yes, we are, we have twenty spaces rented, so.
Okay, Board of Review is Monday, June seventeen at two. And yeah, we have our town board after that. At seven o'clock, agenda items for next meeting? Hearing none, motion? Yeah, we'll try to get some committee appointment.
Any update on the insurance for first responders?
Yeah, we'll have that, risk management insurance is mentioned. Okay, we don't have it down as an item, however, Linda wanted to give us three-minute presentation on the legislative days that she went to Madison for on the fifteenth and sixteenth.
Three minutes, huh? Yes, I spent last Wednesday and Thursday in Madison, it's a good experience. As you know, Sebastopol was a contributor, so that did include the registration. Door County being surrounded by water, water were our main issues. The water levels, we can't do much about the levels, but we did ask our legislators if there's something they can do to expedite dredging and the process that we have to go through in order to accomplish dredging, especially with our shipbuilder. I believe the dry dock is sitting at about four inches of water. So any lower levels are definitely going to affect their capability to launch boats. Likewise, the charter fishermen and the tourism, that depends on customers being able to get from the land to the boat. Another issue was the beach testing. And we learned that beach testing program has been reinstituted and it will be funded for the next two years. So we do have a thousand dollars that the board approved last month. We can actually hold off on that. Or they will hold it in escrow, we're going to be getting a letter from the public health department on what we want to do with that money. Another issue was the Kiwanee County, the Kiwanee Nuclear Plant, the decommissioning. I was not at all familiar with the process, but it's a very complicated process. It can take up to sixty years to decommission a nuclear plant. So their request was that it be put on the fast track, hopefully decommissioned in twenty years or less. But in the meantime, we have spent nuclear waste sitting down there, that's going to have to be stored at county and the Town of Carlton level. In addition to six hundred and fifty jobs being lost, so that was an interesting subject. Family care, fifty-seven out of the seventy-two Wisconsin counties now are enrolled in family care. Door County is being, is requesting to also hop on board with that program. We do have, it's geared, it's geared towards the frail elderly development, developmentally disabled and handicapped persons. We do have a waiting list, so hopefully we can jump on board with family care program and assist those people. Another topic was the winery license. Why can't wineries be treated the same as breweries? Wineries have more limitations than breweries do. And wineries are certainly very popular in Door County right now. School funding, of course, was a subject. We had our school board president, Suzanne Today, was with us. And she sort of summed it up to say that, yes, we're property rich when it comes to assessed valuations and equalized valuations. But that means zero in student aid, so we're requesting some per-student aid based on enrollment as opposed to land values. Mm-hmm. Briefly on levy limits, they're not going to go away, they may even get stricter. One of the representatives said that your levy limit may be further reduced by what you're charging for fees and permits. So that was not good news. That was about it.
For us.
Yeah. Sebastopol, Gibraltar, and I don't know if it's the island. They don't receive any
Oh, no.
Sebastopol, Gibraltar, and
Receive some categorically, but not
Nominals, right?
Yeah.
How was the fish boil?
The fish boil was fine, it was kind of funny because we stayed at, in the park, which is Kitty Corner from the Capitol. So in between these two boat, two tall buildings, Charlie Hendrickson and his crew had built sort of a sandbox and they had a huge fire going in there. And all of the passerby's were thinking, well, what's going on? And especially when they dumped the kerosene on at the end and all this black smoke flows up. So we had a fish boil with butter, of course, makes it really good. Cherry pie, we had local entertainment, Katie Doll, she's a local Door County entertainer. Maureen Murphy, our county administrator, told a few jokes, so. It was a good experience, it was a good experience. I think I exceeded three minutes.
Longest three minutes I've ever
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you didn't, didn't you?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think everybody should go, I don't know if you want to go every two years, but
Right, there were ninety-eight
Maybe once every four or
Once every four, once every six. There were ninety-eight delegates between Door and Kiwanee County, so it was a good turnout.
Did the governor make your breakfast or?
He didn't, he was up in Bayfield for those forest fires, so he couldn't make it, he sent some
Grass fire took his time.
Grass fires, yeah.
Motion?
Okay. Okay, yeah, we can go. Agenda items for next time are done and the motion to adjourn.
So who?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. We got it.